Hi, this is Lowell City Councilor Corey Belanger. And I am running for reelection to serve a third term on the Lowell City Council. I am running first and foremost because I love this job. I enjoy very much serving you, the residents of Lowell, to ensure your quality of life is enhanced every day here in the city of Lowell. I have been a very proactive councilor, often frequenting neighborhoods, businesses, and events throughout the city. Since I've been elected to the city council, we have made tremendous strides in so many aspects of government. Public safety, while we're experiencing 250 sworn police officers, 213 firefighters, that is the highest number of decades here in the city of Lowell of sworn officers. And as a result, violent crimes are down nearly 20% right here in the city of Lowell. There is no doubt Lowell is a safer city since I've been serving on the city council. On economic development, as we embark into the Hamilton Canal District, as we continue to attract businesses to that district, that will ease the burden on the taxpayers, as well as the many other businesses that we've attracted, the Mockley Group in Cronos, just to name a few. My philosophy is give the manager and his administration the tools necessary to attract businesses here to the city. On education, when I was elected to the city council, we ran almost nearly a $4 million deficit in net school spending. Currently, we're going to have a net gain of almost $9 million on education. So we're going to continue this progress if all of you, the voters of Lowell, see it clear to elect me to Lowell City Council for a third term. I will continue to work tirelessly on all these facets of government. Our city is doing great, but much, much more needs to be done. So please, please consider voting for me on Tuesday, November 7th. That's Corey Belanger. You'll find me number one on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Joe Boyle. I'm a Highlands dad, a city planner, and an educator. I am running for Lowell City Council to keep Lowell High Downtown. In almost a decade as a planner in Lowell, as neighborhood planner and as a planning board member, I've seen our city's revitalization up close. I've come to understand the principles behind Lowell's success. Principles like walkable urbanism, historic preservation, and being a welcoming city for immigrants. I entered this race because I understood the threat to Lowell's future posed by the proposal to move the high school to Colley, and how it violates the values that have been so important for our city. A city can never succeed by chasing after the suburbs. A city like ours succeeds by celebrating and leveraging the assets that make us a unique urban community. Lowell should pursue the path that we know works for us. We should redevelop the existing Lowell High, as we have redeveloped so many other historic buildings in our accessible downtown, alongside the other cultural, educational, and historic assets that define Lowell's identity. Another priority of mine is to improve the pedestrian connections from the neighborhoods to downtown. Good pedestrian access for Lowell's neighborhood residents is essential for downtown success. I'll support projects to redesign highway-like roads that cut off downtown for pedestrians, and I'll restore the winter wind barriers to the bridges from Centerville and Pawtucketville. I'll work to expand Lowell's community policing reforms, and to protect the department from intrusive federal immigration mandates. I'll stand with the most vulnerable Lowellians, and with effective and respectful community police. I'll promote the recruitment of Lowell High's successful junior ROTC students as the next generation of police officers, encouraging them to come back and serve their community in uniform after college. And in all things, I will remain true to the principles that have brought this city its success. Lowell deserves leadership that loves this city, for the vibrant urban community that it is, and understands how to build our future by embracing that identity, not running away from it. My name is Joseph Boyle, and I ask for one of your votes for city council.
My name is Sakari Chow. I am running for city council because I want every Lowell citizen to have a voice. I bring fresh ideas, energy, and a new perspective. As a first-time candidate, I want to introduce myself to you. I came to Lowell in 1986 after a long journey escaping the killing fields of Cambodia. I grew up on Butterfield Street. It was tough living in poverty and the acre. I walked to the Bartlett School, where I had great teachers who saw potentials in me. Then I attended Phillips Academy in Andover for four years. Afterward, I went to McAllister College in St. Paul, Minnesota, where I earned a bachelor's degree in political science and economics. I came back to Lowell because I wanted to raise my family here, and also to take care of my aging mother. My wife and I ran a mortgage business in downtown Lowell for seven years. Then I went to work for a law firm. I will bring my small business work ethics to City Hall, and I will work seven days a week for you. This is a citywide election, and I know I can be a voice for all Lowellians, the Caucasians, the Africans, Latinos, African-Americans, and Asians. Martin Luther King had a dream, and John F. Kennedy once said, "We all breathe the same air. We all cherish our children's future." With these ideals, I will focus on your needs and improving your quality of life through safety, like more neighborhood policing on bicycles and foot, more resources to the teachers, and technologies to the schools. Economic growth and development while balancing the budget and controlling city spending, and especially helping our senior citizens to stay in their homes longer. As a councilor, I will unite Lowell, and together we will make the city more efficient, welcoming, and a great place to live. This November 7th, please give me your vote, and a chance to show the great things I can do for Lowell. Please vote for me, Sakari Chow. Por favor, vota por mí. Somos un pueblo yita, somos muchachos yamos, Sakari Chow. Aun, thank you, and God bless.
Hi, my name is Karen Cirillo, and I'm running for city council. I kindly request one of your nine votes on November 7th. Let me quickly tell you what brought me to this wonderful city, and then it will lead into why I'm running for city council. Eight years ago, I was diagnosed with an aggressive form of breast cancer, and all of my family and friends were telling me, "Go to Boston, go to Boston," which is where they felt that I would have the best care that I needed. And I said, "Whoa, wait, hold on a minute. I've heard fantastic things about the Lowell General Hospital Cancer Care Unit." So when I went to Lowell General, I didn't meet with just one doctor. I met with my team of doctors and nurses that were going to help me through the next nine months of my life. And the diversity, the strength, and the goodness of that team of people impressed me. But it wasn't just them. It was the people in market baskets here in Lowell saying hi or smiling at me. It's the small things, really. And it wasn't, it was the community. It was the community that helped me through one of the most difficult times in my life. So the reason why I am running for city council is because I want to give back what Lowell has given to me, which is a stronger, healthier life. And I feel that you, the people of Lowell, every single one of you are important and also deserving of the best that we possibly can give to you as city councilors. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. I want to thank LTC for giving me an opportunity to say a few words to the voters of Lowell. My name is Dave Conway, and I'm a candidate for Lowell City Council. I was born and raised in Lowell, and I'm a proud graduate of Lowell High School. I am married to Mary Cassidy, and we have two daughters, Jennifer and Elizabeth. We are also so blessed to have two granddaughters, Julia and Molly. I have spent many years in public education. Lowell High School as a teacher and housemaster for 37 years. I spent eight years on the Lowell School Committee, and am presently the principal of the Hellenic American Academy. Some of the reasons I'm running for city council are the following. Number one, keep Lowell High School downtown because it's the most efficient, fairest, cost-effective, and least disruptive location for the education of Lowell High School students. No neighborhood in Lowell, except the downtown, can sustain a school project of this size. Number two, protect public safety. I will fight to reinstate the Crime Stoppers Hotline and Safety Task Force in order to better protect the citizens of Lowell. And number three, limit pay raises. The city council recently gave its own members for the next term a 67% increase in pay. That is a 67% increase in pay. If elected, I will not take this pay raise, and will support a city ordinance to require that the voters of Lowell approve any future pay raises for the city council members. I am Dave Conway, and I'm a candidate for Lowell City Council. I humbly ask for one of your nine votes. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Rodney Elliott. I'm running for reelection to the Lowell City Council. I've been married to my wife Laurie for 23 years, and we have raised two daughters, Caitlin and Michaela, in Pawtucketville. We are now the proud grandparents to three granddaughters. I love this city, and I'd like to return to the city council to continue to serve you. And in addition to be a city council, I have served on many volunteer boards and commissions, and I continue to get back to my community. If there's a cause in the city, I'm there to help. For the last 20 years, I've been proud to serve you on the Lowell City Council, and I'd like to continue to be part of the progress that we have seen in the last 20 years. I pride myself on being a hard worker, an independent voice, fiscally conservative, and a person with an open and honest approach to city government. I cast votes with your best interest at heart, even when I'm the lone vote on the issue. We've made great strides in Lowell, and it shows in our city. Our finances are solid, our schools are performing better. We have experienced reduction in crime, and more businesses are coming to Lowell. Our streets are being paved, our sidewalks replaced, and more police officers are on our streets, and we're working to improve our neighborhoods. But I know we still have lots to do. There are still far too many drugs on the streets entrapping our youth in a cycle of addiction. There are too many dilapidated buildings with absentee landlords that we need to crack down on. Traffic is a continual issue that needs to be addressed. I also feel it's important to have a council who understands municipal finance to keep the city in a strong fiscal position. As your councilor, I use my education and my experience to make sound, fiscally responsible decisions with your tax dollars. I continue to pledge to be a fiscal watchdog, to work to keep taxes as low as possible, cut waste from the budget, and attract new businesses in the effort to lighten the burden on you, the taxpayers. We can always do better. We can do more with less, and still deliver you the services you deserve. I again thank you for the privilege of serving you, and I would respectfully ask for one of your votes on Tuesday, November 7th. Thank you very much.
My name is Dan Finn, and I'm a candidate for Lowell City Council. I want to first thank the residents of the city for putting me on the November 6 ballot. Without the support of the city and the residents within it, this opportunity would not be possible. I would like to share with you who Dan Finn is. I am 45 years old. I was born and raised in Lowell. I grew up on Christian Hill. I spent a few years in, living in the Highlands, and now I own a home in Belvedere. I am the son of Mickey and Ann Finn, one of 12 children, seven which still reside in the city. I am married to Tracy Finn, and we have four beautiful children, Aiden, Evan, Danielle, and Nora. Their ages range from 15 to four. I'm a graduate of Lowell High School and also Middlesex Community College. I have worked for the Middlesex Sheriff's Office for the last 20 years. I'm an assistant deputy superintendent, and I'm in charge of the policy and procedure unit. I believe there are many issues that the Lowell City Council must face in the next two years. First is economic development. We have begun the process of building the Judicial Center at the Hamilton Canal Innovation District, which I believe is the anchor to this particular area. We now need to continue to push for new businesses and invest into occupy the remaining parcels. By doing this, we will bring more people into our city, both employees and customers, to these new businesses. It will also supply much-needed opportunities for the residents of our city. With this increased activity in this area, I believe it will overflow and spill into our existing downtown. Overall safety of the city is another concern of mine. We need to supply our first responders with the equipment and staff in order to accomplish this. We also need to address the school system. Our school system, our failing in preventive maintenance, is lacking. If we do not invest in education, we stand to lose existing residents and families that will choose to move on to different communities. We need to build a brand-new high school that meets all of the educational needs of a 21st century education. I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you, and I ask for your vote on November 7th. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Robert Gignac, candidate for the Lowell City Council. It has truly been an honor to represent you on the Lowell School Committee for two terms. If elected to the Lowell City Council, I will continue to fight for our school system. I will ensure that we adequately fund, adequately fund our K-12 system, and expand our relationships with the University of Massachusetts at Lowell and Middlesex Community College. I will also develop a comprehensive maintenance plan for our public school buildings to ensure a safe learning environment for our students and staff. I will also focus on public safety, cracking down on absentee landlords and addressing quality-of-life issues across the city, expanding opiate abuse prevention awareness programs, and developing stronger relationships within our communities for police relations. I will also focus on economic development by developing a marketing plan for potential businesses to move into the city. By doing this, we'll be able to provide relief to our residential taxpayers. And on the Lowell High School project, I will be your voice in ensuring your tax dollars are spent wisely. As a director of finance in the nonprofit sector, I work hard each and every day to ensure we get the best bang for our buck, and I will do that for you. I respectfully request your vote on November 7th. My name is Robert Gignac. Thank you for listening.
Hello, my name is Marty Hogan, and I am proud to be running to represent you on the Lowell City Council. I could tell you lots of specific reasons behind my decision to run, but it all boils down to this. I want to make our city a better place to live and work in, both now and in the future. A cornerstone in my campaign is my fundamental belief that everybody in Lowell deserves equal representation and fair treatment by city officials, specifically by our elected city councilors. I'm running for office because I don't see that happening now. As a resident of Centerville, one of the biggest problems that I see is our current city council often overlooks my neighborhood and yours when making important decisions. The reason for this is simple and strikingly clear, that most of the councilors come from two sections of our city, and don't represent our city as a whole. It's time for us to disperse power on the city council so that all of our neighborhoods are represented equally. People all across our city should have their thoughts and concerns represented whenever they are important decisions to be made. I intend to bring a fresh, new perspective to the city council and be a voice for all of our neighborhoods and the residents living in them. I'll speak up for our neighborhoods whenever I see an opportunity to make life better for our friends and neighbors. I'll seek to distribute city resources more fairly and spread them out across the city like they should be. I'll also make sure that neighborhood concerns are adequately heard on important issues like public safety, tax spending, and education. These issues affect all of our residents equally, and decisions on critical matters like these shouldn't be made based on what neighborhood you live in. Decisions made by our city councilors should always be made for the benefit of everyone in Lowell. So on Tuesday, November 7th, I'm asking you for your vote to represent you and all of Lowell on the city council. My name is Marty Hogan, and I appreciate your time, and I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ed Kennedy, and I am the current mayor of the city of Lowell and a candidate for reelection to the Lowell City Council. As the mayor, I'm proud of the progress we've made over the past two years, but I'm also very aware of the work that we still need to do. I have four main areas of emphasis for the upcoming term: economic development, public safety, education, and a focus on the neighborhoods. The city has made much progress in terms of economic development. With the Hamilton Canal Innovation District finally starting to take shape after many years, I'm encouraged both by the investment in our city by major companies like Cronos and the Mockley Group, as well as the several smaller companies and startup organizations that have decided to locate in Lowell. The city council and the city administration should always be aggressive when it comes to economic development, because that is how you expand the city's tax base and keep taxes as low as possible while continuing to provide quality municipal services. In terms of public safety, a new FBI report has come out that indicates that crime is on the rise throughout the United States. However, here in Lowell, crime has decreased by 10% over the past year. Those are the statistics. But what is important is that people feel safe in our city, and that is what I have pursued and hope to continue to do. The city council must always be responsive to the needs of its neighborhoods, and I have worked closely with constituents from every neighborhood in the city. As the mayor over the past two years, I have had the privilege of serving on the Lowell School Committee. I have worked hard on several initiatives related to the schools that are designed to both save money and improve services for all of our students. I intend to continue to support the school system as a city councilor if I am reelected, which brings me to the most prominent issue on the city's agenda right now, the future of Lowell High School. I have been a strong proponent for keeping the high school downtown. The downtown location is centrally located and the most taxpayer-friendly option when the additional and non-reimbursable costs for the Colley site, such as infrastructure and traffic improvements, and annual busing costs, are considered. Thank you, and I hope you will consider Ed Kennedy for one of your nine votes on November 7th.
Hi, my name is Jim Larry, and I'm a candidate for reelection to the Lowell City Council. I've been fortunate to represent you for 10 years on the Lowell School Committee, and I've been fortunate to represent you for the past two years on the Lowell City Council. My wife Kara and I are raising our 10-year-old son Lorenzo. He is currently a student at the Daily School. We're very proud of the education that he's received in Lowell Public Schools, and we're very proud to be residents of the Highland Neighborhood, and very proud to be residents of the city of Lowell. For the past two years, I've been fortunate to be part of a team, a team that's worked very hard to bring public safety to the forefront, with the most law enforcement professionals out there since the Bill Clinton era, and a crime rate that has gone down 10% when other cities are seeing a dramatic increase in crime. We have a lot more work to do in that area, but it's an area that I'm fortunate to work with eight other councilors and the city administration, and the police department, and the public safety officials at the fire department to bring better safety to the entire city of Lowell. My profession, I used to own my own business as an insurance consultant for over 10 years. I'm currently a vice president in an insurance startup company, and I have a staff that works throughout the United States, so I have a good idea as to how economic development can run. And one of the things that I've been proud to work with my team on the city council and with the city administration is the Innovation District and small businesses in Couples Square, and now currently we're working on Bridge Street and soon to be other parts of the small business community, which is imperative for the economic and tax base for the city. I'm excited about the Innovation District. After many years in many city councils and many city administrations, we're finally seeing the fruits of their labor, and I'm a small part of that with some of the knowledge that I have going forward, and hopefully we'll see that take off in the next few years. I say hopefully because it has been a challenge. However, when you're seeing the courthouse go up with seven stories, you're seeing Sal Lapoli interested in different parts of the parcels, you're seeing Win Development, who left initially as our project developer, but then came back. I stand working for the Lowell City Council regarding the Lowell High School. That's been the most divisive issue in anybody's recent memory. I voted for Colley. However, if a majority of the city council wants to have it downtown, I would support that strongly, and I would support eminent domain if that's actually occurring. I said that publicly, and I would continue to do so. Lowell must have a public high school. It must have a new public high school for the economic development, as well as for the taxpayers to stay remaining in the city of Lowell. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to this. I appreciate, and I am honored to represent you. Have a great day, and I respectfully ask for one of your nine votes on November 7th. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Matt LaLasher, and I'm running for Lowell City Council. And while the last name may sound familiar, the Lowell Spinner Spaceball Stadium is named after my grandfather, Ed LaLasher, I can assure you this is my first run at political office. I'd like to take a minute to share with you why I decided to run. Like so many of you, what's most important to me is my family and the future of my three small children. And as I look out across the landscape of Lowell, I see a future we all should be excited about. Unfortunately, the building of a new or renovated high school has clouded too many of us from feeling that excitement. So for a moment, I'd like to ask you to look past each candidate's position on the high school and ask yourself, is this person someone I can trust? Someone I feel comfortable with making the important decisions that we are all going to face in the neighborhoods over the next two years? If the answer is yes, vote for that candidate. And if you're going to allow one issue to dictate this election, make it what each candidate's vision for the future of Lowell is. Make us convince you that we have the best interests of Lowell's residents at heart, all of Lowell's residents. Make us tell you what we believe. I believe the most important job of a city councilor is to spend your money wisely, and that the redevelopment of downtown is the key to slowing the seemingly unending tax increases we've all been facing. I believe clean, safe neighborhoods are something we can never compromise on, and that a first-class 21st-century education is the foundation of our children's and our city's future. I also believe the only way to lessen the blow of the increased taxes we will face with the building of the new high school is to redevelop the existing site with someone other than UMass Lowell so we get the tax revenue. And I'm asking that you trust and believe that I can help make that happen. So if you feel good enough is no longer good enough, and that it's time for my generation to step forward with fresh ideas, and you think I may have the ability to listen, learn, and lead, I ask for your vote on November 7th. Please don't sit this election out. It's far too important. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rita Mercia, and that special time is upon us once again, where I come before you and humbly ask for your support so that I can return to the Lowell City Council. For the past 22 years, you have allowed me the opportunity to serve all the people in this great city, and I was honored to do so. Through my votes for the past two years, I have supported $3 million in additional funding to the Lowell Public Schools, continued funding for 250 police officers, the highest level in decades, and 213 firefighters, which means less company closing and less overtime while maintaining public safety, targeted problem landlords through the Need and Dot program, supported capital investment for the citywide paving sidewalk program, turnout gear for the fire department, GPW vehicle replacement, and so much more. I am proud of the direction that this administration has taken in economic development. $140 million in eight housing development projects totaling 665 residential units for people with disposable income. I want you to know that I am pursuing an agenda, one of fairness, vision, careful planning, and the best representation that you truly deserve. I offer myself as a messenger, a link between you, the public, and the government. I will continue to work hard for you if you will still have me. On Tuesday, November 7th, I'm respectfully asking you to allow me to stay in casting one of your votes for me, Rita Mercia, number six on the ballot. Thank you, and thanks, LTC.
Hi, I'm Jim Millinazzo. I'm a candidate for reelection to the Lowell City Council. Let me begin by thanking LTC for the opportunity to have the candidates come in and talk to the voters directly. I've been on the city council now for 12 years, and I'm looking forward to continuing in that role. I feel that my background, both public and private sector, really brings a unique perspective to being on the city council. We have a number of issues before us. We've supported everything from increased public safety, quality public education, dealing with issues around quality of life, and economic development. We have a lot going on as it relates to all of those priority areas. For instance, on public safety, we have 250 sworn police officers on the street. From the standpoint of quality of life, I just look at last weekend when we had the Lowell Kinetic Event here, we had 5,000 people in the downtown, the Folk Festival. From the standpoint of economic development, we have a lot of good projects going on. We have the Hamilton Canal Innovation District. We have the downtown area looking at the upper floors, working with the local banking community to make sure that there's programs in place to rent the upper floors in the downtown. But the most important issue is public education, and the high school is paramount to the residents here and the debate that's taking place. I think the debate has been healthy. Community activism has been good. I support the downtown site. I'm going to continue to support the downtown site from the standpoint of fairness and equality. Again, the Colley site turns out to be the most expensive to the taxpayer, and I think we have to be cognizant of that fact. So I'm going to continue to support the downtown site. I want to congratulate the people on the downtown side of the equation, getting the registered voters to put it on as a non-binding referendum November 7th, and I would urge the voters in Lowell to support keeping the high school downtown. Again, my name is Jim Millinazzo. I'm running for reelection. I bring a lot to the discussion, and I would respectfully request one of your nine votes on November 7th. Thank you. Thank you.
I would like to thank LTC for this taping. I would like to sincerely thank the voter of Lowell for supporting my campaign and for our vision for Lowell in yesterday, or in Tuesday, past Tuesday preliminary elections. The preliminary election results have sent a resounding message that voter won an honest and straightforward leadership, an elected official that are willing to take a stand on issues that impact those whom they send to City Hall to represent them. That is what my campaign is all about. In recent months, I have taken my message, or we have taken our message, to every neighborhood in Lowell. On every street I walk, I've heard from voters who believe that our city council need to do a better job listening to the people of Lowell. While much more is at stake in 2017 than the high school decision, yesterday made clear that many people have felt left out of this critical, important debate. My task as a candidate is to continue to listen to every point of view. I hope to have opportunity to carry a diverse perspective that I have encountered with me to the council. I'm looking forward to continue my effort to spread my message in the week heading up to the general election. With your support, we can bring leadership and engage everyone who call Lowell home, back to City Hall. Together, we can make it happen. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Daniel Rourke, and I'm running for reelection to the Lowell City Council. I have been honored to serve the citizens of Lowell over the past four years. As a member of the council, I have focused on initiatives that promote economic growth and redevelopment, such as the expansion of Crosspoint Towers and the development of the Hamilton Canal District that will expand our tax base in order to keep the residential burden in check. I have chaired the Neighborhood Services Subcommittee, and for the first time since its inception, I have held meetings in each of Lowell's neighborhoods. By bringing City Hall to the people, attendance has increased as well as quicker responses to questions and concerns in our neighborhoods. I have also supported education initiatives, including the building of a brand-new school that will ensure all of our students receive the highest quality education and access to opportunities. I remain committed to continue to make our city the best place to live, work, and raise a family. I respect Lowell's proud past, but understand the need for innovative thinking for the future of our great city. Once again, my name is Daniel Rourke, and I respectfully ask for your vote on Tuesday, November 7th. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Bill Samaras, and I'm running for reelection to the Lowell City Council. And once again, I'm asking for your support so I may continue working on the city council. But a little more about me. I was born and raised in Centerville till I was married and moved to Belvedere. I am the former headmaster of Lowell High School, and while under my watch, Lowell High School was named one of the best urban high schools in the country by Newsweek Magazine and one of the best-managed high schools in the state by Boston Magazine. I also worked with Kendall Wallace and Bill Topia to create the Latin Lyceum for our gifted students. I created a $4 million endowed scholarship fund so our students may realize their dreams. So, I think I know a little bit about Lowell High School. But I also learned to listen to my students because they are our future, and I learned to listen to the parents about present-day issues and their concerns. These are important skills that I brought to the council, the ability to listen and to work with people. I learned about the importance of working with the neighborhood groups. That is why I attend all of the neighborhood meetings in Centerville, Potocaville, the Highlands, Belvedere, and the downtown. That is where I have learned about the issues that you are concerned with. As Chairman of Economic Development, our team has long-lasting the building of the courthouse. Wind Development constructing two residential buildings was commercial space. S&R Construction ready to sign papers for a new building. The infrastructure work being completed. I have been part of the team to put more police on the streets. While crime has increased nationwide, according to FBI reports, Lowell's crime rate has been reduced by 10%. We are no longer calling, closing fire stations because we are better staffed. We are doing what is necessary to make Lowell a safer city and improve the quality of life for everyone. So, once again, my name is Bill Samaras. I'm seeking reelection to the Lowell City Council, and I need your help to continue this work. Thank you.